Okay, Board of Trustees, is there a motion to open the public hearing on Local Law Number A, proposed of 2017?
So moved.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, the public hearing is open. And before we take your comments, I just want to say, folks, first of all, we're not going to vote on anything tonight. And we think that this is... We know this is an important and sensitive issue, and our zoning review committee spent a lot of time on it. The board has spent a lot of time on it. And it's important that we get all your input and everything. We're not rushing any decisions. So I just wanted to tell you that this is going to go on for some time beyond the season. So with that said, a very important part of the process are your comments. So we open the floor to any discussion of the proposed hen law.
I'll go first.
Comments? Yes. And also if you could just say your name and address please.
John Collins, Severn Lothr Lane. As a landowner in very tight quarters with neighbors who's lived with chickens now for some time with my backyard neighbor, I'd like to go on record as asking the board not to allow chickens on properties less than one acre in land. I mean, our properties are just too close together for having chickens. A setback of 15 feet when you've got a quarter acre lot, a third acre lot. 15 feet, 10 feet, 5 feet, it really doesn't make any difference. And I understand everybody's concern relative to sustainability and whatnot. Anybody who doesn't think chickens are a potential nuisance can come to my house on a Saturday morning when they want us to sleep in. We have a nice quiet neighborhood in here in Tivoli that we all enjoy. But even chickens can make enough noise that on a Saturday morning, you can't sleep in as long as you might want to sleep, no matter how far or how close they are. I have found on my property, in the vicinity of where the chickens are kept, broken egg shells. Are they bird eggs or are they chicken eggs? I can't tell you. And last fall, my wife even saw a rat on the back of our deck. These animals are going to be coming around chicken coops. And we can't stop that. I don't know if anybody's heard the last few weeks that every couple of nights, you know, they're hearing coyotes in the distance in the north here. Certainly see plenty of additional foxes running across the road that we didn't see growing up or in recent years with all the preservation of animals lately. So I think chickens in a residential area of quarter acre, third acre lots are just inappropriate.
Thank you, Mr. Collins.
If you go Wall Street, Green Tree Road, I would agree with this. I'm sorry.
John.
John, Pete. I would agree with John, mainly based on the vermin moving in. Mice, rats, if you've got a lot of feet around, eggs. You know, I'd be thrilled to see a coyote in town myself. I don't mind that, but certainly not rats and mice. So, I mean, we are, we're on, what's the max over there? Three quarters of an acre? I mean, you know. So I would encourage the board not to encourage any more farming on quarter acre lots, half acre lots, based on the vermin alone. Because that will come, I can guarantee you that.
Thank you, Pete. Other comments?
I'm Amy Peterson, I'm at Forest U Broadway. And it seems to me that the concerns of people in the development are very different from the things of people who are not in that area. And I have inherited a couple of hens, and they free range. And I continually ask my neighbors if they're bothered by them. They all say no, and they really love them. I think that a lot of people in Tivoli like this feeling of, you know, seeing a few hens at the end of the road. And there's a certain charm about it. There are some things in here that address, you know, keeping the food in a bin which would keep vermin away. We don't have any problems with vermin. If anything, I think that, I don't know if there's some way to have different sets of restrictions for different parts of the village, but I feel like this is too restrictive for what I would like to see. I think that it's healthy for chickens to free range. It's good for them to eat chicks. Some people enjoy seeing that. And I think, you know, as long as people are aware of their neighbors' experiences and can be thoughtful, that that should be allowable. I also think with these provisions about setback behind the front of the house and having to have shrewdly blocking the coop are problematic because they're about aesthetics. They're not about chickens. They're about, some people they'll like the look of a chicken coop. And so we're going to build into this chicken law something that says that coop has to be out of sight. You know, well, maybe I don't like the look of Christmas lights or garden gnomes or windsocks, but I'm not going to propose a legislation just because I don't like how those things look. And maybe I think those things lower property values. I'm not going to say you can't have those things. One last thing that I want to say is that at the last meeting, there was a lot of conversation about people were saying they thought that chickens lowered property values. And I really want to disagree with that. And I want to point out that the house behind mine on Washburn, a couple of weeks ago was put on the market and had an offer made within four days. And the people who put that offer and had their offer accepted came over and introduced themselves to me and told me how much they liked the chickens wandering around and how much their daughter liked that. So I think that I haven't seen any evidence of people not being able to sell their houses or having to sell them for a lower value that would support that argument against allowing chickens. And again, I speak from my experience where I live. I don't know what the experience is in the development where they're more close together.
Well, free range and chickens, first time I see one in my yard and it shits in my yard and my kid falls in it, plays in it, then we're going to have a problem.
Before Pete jumped in, I want to thank you for your comments.
Okay, I'm Virginia LaBarbe, 68 North Road, Tivoli. I've been here 57 years. I have chickens. My chickens are free range, but my place is almost all fenced in, and it has been fenced in. I just spent three grand on putting another fence up on the south side of my property so my chickens wouldn't go over to Armstrong's place, over to the house next door there, up to the front, halfway down the side. You know, chickens don't make a lot of noise. Roosters do. Roosters cackle, make a lot of noise. Chicken, buck, smack, 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 back. It's not, and I can understand if, if you, you know, you live... I have a lot of land. These people don't have a lot of land, which I understand their problem, okay? But if you have chickens or any kind of animal, you should be able to take care of them, clean up, don't have, don't leave it a real mess, you know? I mean, you got it, you got to take care of it. You know, you can have, you get manure from them. People buy the manure, it's gold, you know? You take it, it's not powered up. And yeah, coyotes, we've had coyotes here, we've had foxes here. We're overrun by foxes, overrun by coyotes. Now they brought in bobcats to kill the coyotes, is what I can understand. All right? So, and that's not just from chickens being here, all right? So it's a, you know, I mean, I only have one sheet of paper. I don't know what the last meeting was all about and what was said. And I don't have my glasses, so I can't read all of the other stuff. I can't see what it's all about, okay? Which I would like to get a sheet to know.
Sure.
And I should have been here the last meeting.
You don't have a full copy of the...
No, I only have...
Okay.
That's it.
And these references to the last meeting?
Yeah.
For people who don't know, so our zoning review committee, which is an appointed committee of residents who work on various potential code changes. And then as residents make recommendations to the board of trustees who may or may not act on those. That's the process. And the zoning review committee decided, that was in the springtime, to have a forum to sort of start the public conversation. So that was the previous meeting that...
I mean, I've had a farm, my, as long as I've lived in Tivoli, 57 years. I've always had a farm. I've lost cows, chickens, pigs, guinea pigs, pigeons after pigeons that are here. My dad used to buy at the auction and bring them here and they fly up and hang up at schoolhouse, okay? I went to school in Tivoli, you know? I'm dedicated to my village. Okay, lately I'm not doing what I would like to do, but my chickens are my children. My turkeys are my children. You can come up to them, you can pet them, you can feed them by hand. They're not nasty. They've been, three of them have been getting out in the road, which I keep them in today. And I don't, they're coming out, coming up the side and going out my main driveway, which I'm going to, I have to put a fence up on each side to keep them in because I don't want them getting hit, okay? You know, and it's going to look kind of awkward for me to do it, I'm more money. But I want to keep my kids in. I want to keep them safe because they're my kids, okay? And, I mean, I could have what I want there and I don't want no more of what I got, you know? But they keep having babies, okay?
Matthew Cabal.
Yeah, they do. I got the white ducks with the, going with the little brown ducks. And now I got a tuxedo duck. He's black. I call him Tuxedo. He's black and he's got the white down here, okay? What am I going to do, you know? But my kids, I'm sorry, but my kids, I'm long-winded, I know I am.
That's all right. So am I sometimes.
But they're my kids.
I don't have a leg in this fight really, but...
And you go by my house, anybody go by my house and see my kids. They're friendly, they're nice. I give eggs, I give eggs away to half Tivoli, so...
Man without a leg in this fight.
Yeah. You know, you talk about, you know, the chickens, first of all, they do eat ticks by the gallon. And the fertilizer is much more preferable than the massive amounts of pesticide and fertilizer that you use, especially in the development area. And there are signs up there that kids aren't even allowed to play on there because of the poisons that they put on them. So I don't get worried about fertilizer and, you know, the natural substance of chickens. It doesn't make any sense. But again, I don't live in the development, I don't know if, and chickens, you're right, chickens don't make noise and I like to see them. And, you know, they're just, it's nice to live in a semi-rural area and right go to the village, but still see the chickens roaming. But I'm sure there's more I can say that we have.
Mr. Walsh?
I shouldn't have to put a fence up or a hedge up to block out or keep out someone's chickens from my yard or to block out a chicken coop. Jenny's got a lot of land.
I got a lot of land.
Right. She doesn't live in the hood on a quarter acre or a half acre.
Well, yeah, I mean, but the legislation is not suggesting that you have to put up the fence with this.
No, they should put up the fence.
The hedge is the chicken.
That's something that...
Mr. Money?
I also, like Matthew, don't have chickens, nor do I particularly have any interest in having chickens. But I've been the beneficiary of many village chickens over the years. And I don't know, I just, it feels to me that the primary divide here does seem to be between the development and the rest of the village. And I wonder if, separate from that, if, is there a homeowners association over in the development at all?
No, but I'm concerned.
I mean, that might be one way to approach it. If the, if the needs of that neighborhood are so divergent from the rest of the village, it might, that might be a solution that would be better than mandating your needs on the rest of the village.
I mean, I don't know, I don't look into mandating my needs on the rest of the village.
Yeah.
I just believe that when you have quarter acre lots, your houses are less than 100 feet apart in any direction. Chickens are farm animals, chickens are not pets. And to say that they don't make noise is just inaccurate. Now, they don't make a lot of noise during the heat of the day when there's a lot of activity going on around the development? It just falls into all the other background noises? But you get into the quieter the night and the quieter the early morning, when they're that close, they are loud enough that can wake you up in the morning from sleep. And if you don't acknowledge that that's possible, like I say, just come over to Lothr Lane any Saturday morning at 5:00, 6:00 o'clock, when they're going to be up. You can hear them, you can hear from my back bedroom, which is only 50 feet maybe from the chicken coop. I guarantee you, you can hear them from the road on Tivoli, on Lothr Lane, at certain times of the day. And again, no, it's not, it's not like a lawnmower going or some other really loud noise. But again, it is enough that it will wake you up. And why should I, you know, we all work hard. I have an 11-hour day, Monday through Friday. On Saturdays and Sundays, sometimes you want to sleep in a little bit. But that's not even the biggest concern. The biggest concern again is having found broken egg shells on my property, having seen a rat on our back deck. And if you've seen one, you know there's others. And they're going to be attracted to those animals and what those animals put out. And I don't hold it against anybody who wants to have chickens. I just don't believe that they're appropriate when you have housing that is that close together. One thing I would like to add here right now before I forget is, because this also applies to some of the other laws you've talked about in the past. The ones mentioned, as the lady in front of you mentioned, about needing screening from the front. And while screening from the front is important, again, in a R-15, quarter acre, half acre lot, front yard, backyard doesn't make any difference. Somebody's backyard is going to be my backyard too. So if you're going to consider screening, then I would suggest at least do screening on all sides from all of the property owners.
Adjacent property.
Yeah.
That's your point.
Yeah, in all directions. If this has to pass, then at least everyone shouldn't have to... It's not just the front of the property that's affected. Back of properties are also affected because our properties are so close together.
But how many chickens do they have over there?
I have no idea.
Do they have, are they free range?
No, no, he's got them in a coop.
Just in a coop?
Nope, nope, they're not free range.
Does he have, does he have a fence around that he let them out?
I don't believe he lets them out, no. I think it's just a coop.
Well, how can you have eggs in the back if you don't let your chickens out?
Good question. Yes, good question.
You know, I mean, how can you have eggs in the back?
I was thinking...
Probably if you keep them in a coop.
No, I was thinking the egg shells were there because they've been stolen by rats or other animals out of the coop.
Well, how can it be thrown out if you don't let them out? How can they get in, how can they get into the coop to get, to get the eggs? That's what I'm saying.
I don't know. I can only tell you what I've seen.
They're throwing, they're throwing them out.
Yeah, I can only tell you what I've seen.
Nobody's throwing them out.
We're going to go to Mr. Money again?
Uh, just to finish, what I was saying is, again, I think it really comes down to an issue of a difference in lifestyle from one part of the village to the other. So I think that that maybe is best dealt with on an even more local level. I think the idea of banning all livestock, especially something as innocuous as chickens from what is essentially a rural village is just a step too far. I know that the, again, it seems to me more neighborhood concern than a village-wide concern. I understand your point, and I, I'm not out there angling to have chickens next door to me either. But I think that just as a general concept in a village like this that has a long history that's involved all kinds of livestock, let alone, let alone small birds, I just would like to put in a vote in favor of chickens. And their eggs are delicious too.
I just wanted to talk, speak more to some issues raised by the gentleman behind me. And I mean, I totally understand not wanting noise waking you up. I'm a really terrible sleeper and I would find that really frustrating. But it seems to me like this is an instance of one person not being a responsible animal owner in the same way that you can have a dog in a fenced yard barking at all hours, waking you up in the morning. That could happen with any number of animals. And, you know, we're not going to, if you had a neighbor who had a barking dog that was keeping you awake, we're not going to outlaw all dogs in the village. So I wonder if there's some way to address problematic circumstances like those, you know, noise violations, refuse violations, without having to create a law banning or even tightly restricting chickens all across the village. It seems like overkill to manage a couple of specific issues of neighbors who aren't very thoughtful.
Yeah, hire a chicken keeper.
Well, it might be a time, I don't know how well everyone studied it, but, you know, some of the points in the legislation. And this was, the zoning review committee, I don't know how many months were spent on this, six-ish?
At least.
Right. And many other municipal ordinances from around the country were looked at. I mean, there's a lot of thorough decision-making when it's just to get to this legislation. And I think there are several sort of main points that always come up in each law. So if I skip any, maybe you'll say it. But one of those, as far as enforcement, right? So what this legislation proposes is that anyone who owns chickens, hens, obviously, no roosters right here, we got that part, no roosters, has to come and get a non-transferable license from the village clerk. And there may be a fee associated with that at the discretion of the village board. And, you know, we had a situation where some renters ended up with some chickens recently. And so that caused plenty of problems. And so one of the things is if the applicant is not the owner of the lot, the application shall be accompanied by a notarized letter from the owner authorizing the keeping of hens. So... And prior to the issuance of the license, the CEO will inspect the premises and confirm in writings that the standards of subsection 231-32 were met. And it also says, you know, violations, if they don't keep their chickens like this law says they ought to, the law does not written in stone yet, then the license for the keeping of hens shall be automatically revoked for a period of two years. And on a, that's on a first and second offense. And on a third offense, that property owner cannot get a license issued for two years. I just say the same thing, I'll just repeat it. "A license for the keeping of hens shall be automatically revoked for a period of two years upon conviction of a third offense related to this section. And no new license for the same property or owner shall be issued for a period of two years from the date of conviction." I guess that's if you move across town. So let's see, the other points are, sorry, go ahead.
Well, so I think the idea with, with saying that, you know, you need to have a chicken license and a nominal fee is to get people in the door here so we can hit them with a stack of information on how to care for your chickens, right? Because maybe a lot of people didn't grow up with chickens and like the idea of chickens, but have no idea what to do. So come in, pay a little fee, get a packet of information that we've compiled based on exhaustive chicken research that, you know, will show you how to do it safely, humanely, and with a minimum of, I don't know, impact to, you know, your neighbors. You know, because it's a tiny village and we all have different expectations for comfort and aesthetics and whatnot. So minimal impact with maximum freedom is, I think, the goal.
Anyway. Just to comment, the code prior to this was very ambiguous. I witnessed different CBAs saying they were permitted and they weren't permitted based on the same laws. So part of it is just to make the whole thing a lot clearer and easier to handle. And I do know, as I'm reading through this, that section 23132A2 addresses some of the issues. How waste is to be disposed of, how odor is to be controlled, how food is to be stored. All these things are indicative that the intent of it is to make sure that you're not imposing on your neighbors.
So if something like this passed and your neighbor had hens and they weren't keeping it clean, tidy, violating anything, then you get to call the code enforcement officer who goes over there and sees whether or not they're complying with the terms of law.
And chickens have been in Tivoli for a very long time, is what I would say. So they've been here with indifference to the code. And hopefully the code will make living with the chickens.
There's a lot of stuff been here for a long time without codes. I mean, you know, we can talk about cars, we can talk about all kinds of them.
I'd like to echo what Susan said because, you know, personally, my own interest in getting some kind of chicken law on the books is because historically, we've had a lot of problems because it's vague or undefined and it's not clear. So the goal was to try and make some clear rules that keep the most people happy, whether that's you don't want chickens, you don't want them next door. You need to have protections that currently I hear people's quality of life being impacted. That bothers me greatly. But also, I think we're hearing that in some, you know, to some degree, some places in Tivoli, why wouldn't you have some hens for eggs or whatever? So how do you go down the middle and make something sensible that protects the quality of life and also allows freedom with least impacts, as the deputy mayor said? Amy?
I appreciate all the work that everyone put into this. But my sense is that it's, people are unhappy on both sides. And I understand you're trying to reach a middle ground. But I'm concerned that the needs of these people aren't going to be addressed. The chickens will still make noise and keep them awake. But is there anything in here that is going to change that? And at the same time, other people are going to be sad because they're not going to be able to see the chickens around Tivoli anymore. So I don't know, you know, I just want to register that I, I don't think that this is a perfect solution for the problem. And I wonder, again, I hate to say scrap all the work you've done, but I'm wondering if there's some other way to address the concerns that are coming up other than...
We're looking for ideas, that's what these hearings are about. I mean, on a lot of things, and I'll get to, you know, on a lot of things, there's a sticky problem. You've got people on both sides and it often feels up here that you go down the middle and of course, you're damned if you do, damned if you don't, which I think is your point. So Jenny, and then Pete.
Yeah, I mean, Angela lived next to me for 10 years. And she always told me she liked the chickens going over there and eating the ticks. And she had the dogs there, the ticks didn't, you know? She liked the ducks and stuff, they was to walk over. She never complained to me at all about the animals. Maybe my family she did, but not my chickens. But, you know, but no, I can, I can see a point, but I don't know you. And I don't know how long you guys have been living here in Tivoli. Did you move in when these guys had chickens?
I grew up with chickens, but I had five acres.
Oh, okay. No, but I meant, all right, and you?
No, ma'am, I've been there for 25 years.
Okay, and then they got the chickens after you were here?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, well, then I can see you're, if you're not used to it, all of a sudden somebody throws something fun at you.
It's not that I'm not used to it. I mean, I grew up upstate, so I know what it's like. It's, chickens are not pets. Doesn't chicken are for...
My chickens are pets.
Yeah, but they're not, they're not for areas where you've got high population. They're for farms. They're for people who live in the country.
I'm going to get a cow.
Who have some separation from their neighbors.
I'm going to get a cow.
You can.
Maybe a couple of them.
Pete Walsh, did you have another comment?
What's going on in the village of Red Hook? They got chickens running around or...
I don't think they permit chickens at all.
Right. What's going on in village Hyde Park? Do chickens run around? I mean, I mean, I'm not trying to be sarcastic, but the village runs.
Yeah, I mean, it's just as easy...
They got chickens running around? I guarantee you, they have, no, they have some kind of zoning where you got X amount of acres to have certain types of livestock. Guaranteed.
They probably do.
I guarantee you, go through Linden Acres.
Restriction like that is something that was certainly tossed about.
You go through Linden Acres, they don't have chickens.
For example, this is an easy one, whatever, like no chickens in the general business district, right? I mean, no one from the GBs here is saying I should have chickens on Broadway behind my house. But I think they'd be comfortable with your work. Pete, mine?
It seems to me there's three, there's really three options here, right? And it seems, one option is to do absolutely nothing, which would suck because you guys have worked really hard on this. But that one option of doing absolutely nothing would leave us with the situation that we're in now, which is a completely unclear code that actually allows even larger animals and fewer restrictions in different parts of the village, if I'm, if I'm correct, right? I mean, it's so ambiguous at this point that...
No, there's also this law's introducing a definition.
Exactly. So that's, so that's the second option, is you find a middle ground to help alleviate the issues that some folks are going to have with it and allow other people to have chickens. So you're, it's essentially a compromise. And as Amy pointed out, not everybody is totally happy with that. And that usually, to me, means it's about as fair as it gets. And the other option is to ban them altogether, which maybe it's true in the village of Red Hook, there are no chickens. But I bet you anything that in the town of Red Hook, there are, which, and of course, the lot sizes are different.
Three acre zoning in Red Hook in the town.
And, but a lot of the lot sizes in Tivoli are different as well. We have some larger lot sizes. Mine is almost an acre. I don't think it would impact anybody if I had chickens out in the back. And not to mention the fact that banning them altogether is just not tenable because I think there would be a huge uproar. And I think, quite frankly, would be unfair. I think that the legislation being proposed is not maybe ideal for some, but I think it's a fairly good compromise to address most people's concerns. If you look, I haven't even read the whole thing yet, but if you just go by the intent of the law, just section one seems to actually address almost all of the concerns that you guys have in a way that's, that's clear, which it isn't now, and that is enforceable by a code enforcement officer. So it seems to me that a lot of the issues are actually addressed by this that wouldn't otherwise be. Anyway, that's, that's it.
Any other comments or comments from the board?
Well, I think people have been keeping chickens in Tivoli since about seventeen-twenty-five, and the village is not, you know, it's not the same as it was then, right? And there's a lot of changes in the village, a lot of changes in expectations, and so I think we need, we need something to, you know, keep the peace.
Excuse me, I really, I think there is a, a divide between the development and the rest of the village, because obviously, they're more, a suburb, suburb area, where it's more free, freewheeling than the rest of the village. I mean, you have the business...
Also physically laid out a different plan, so you, you have a backyard that's much more private than anything.
You go down, you know, Montgomery, you have a set of houses. Then you go North Road, and they have, they have things spread out. It's just no rhyme or reason, but you have that development, which is a special area. Maybe that should be focused on at that area.
The, the sort of bifurcated nature of the village comes up in almost every law or policy we try and engage in. It's really, it's super challenging. We're clearly aware of it, and it's always a problem.
Are the lot sizes that big, much bigger than the rest of the village?
Well, they vary tremendously.
Here we are. Our fifteen-hundred, so is Montgomery Street. So, those are the...
There's a lot of houses in the village that look like they're supposed to guarantee...
Minimum lot sizes.
So, you know, throughout, throughout here, Montgomery Street, North Road, you know, you've got little tiny lots, and you've got three-acre lots. It really varies tremendously. I mean, few places are as uniform as development, certainly.
And the other thing is, I think, which is probably more important, where you are, somebody's front yard, it can be somebody else's side yard. So, it's that, it's that elliptical way that the roads run through it that creates different issues.
I'm just curious about what the legal issues are around the ideas of, of a neighborhood association, right? So, let's just say, just hypothetically, I don't know if anybody has an answer for this, but if the, if the subdivisions wanted to create a different set of rules for their part of the village, is that allowable on, on residential areas that are served by public roads, for example? Like, is there a way that people can group together and say, you know, we don't want this right here, but we don't necessarily need to impact the rest of the village with our needs? Is that, is that a viable option, or is that...
I think we'd have to be a voluntary association.
Yeah.
So, that's why, that's for supply. And I think one of the things we're really recognizing here is that zoning also doesn't last spot for zoning.
Gotcha.
So, you can't say this around...
So, it has to be a whole sort of thing.
And the commonality between the development and Montgomery Street is that they're both R-15 zoning, which is minimum lot size of fifteen-hundred.
Isn't the, isn't this district essentially spot zoning? Having like a separate business district?
No, 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 that's a zone. It's called the central business district, and it's a zone.
Susan, would it be legit to treat the R-15 that's within the historic overlay differently than R-15 that's not?
That may be a possibility, yeah. But that's what, that's, that's the constraint you have in drafting, is that you can't say, you, Peter, can't have chickens, and neither can your neighbor. You, you have to say, you're both, you're R-15 hundred, and so is Peter Mooney's, and you have to have the same laws applied to you. That's, that's one of the problems you have in drafting.
Would anyone like to comment on B? Because we're not just talking about the gallus-gallus domesticus, we're also talking about, we're going to ban roosters, ducks, geese, turkeys, guinea fowl, peacocks, and peahens. Of any, of any non-farm lot.
I have them all, anything you mention. I got geese.
How many acres you got over there, Jenny?
Five. I have two saguas, I have ducks, I got geese, well, geese, geese, geese. I have turkeys, and I have a peah, chickens and ducks, and peahen. And a peahen came from a guy.
Oh, you still have that?
Yes, I do, she came back again.
Go ahead.
Yep.
On a lot that's twenty-five acres. Twenty-five acres, I'm learning.
Yes, yes.
Right, that's the difference.
I mean, you know, I wanted, I wanted to build a pond for them. I was gonna build a pond.
Unfortunately, that five acres that Jenny has is in one-acre zoning. So, there will be lots with one acre.
In the what?
You have five acres, but you're in a zoning district.
Okay.
For one-acre zoning.
Okay.
So, you need the same rules for everyone in that?
You do. You can't just say, five acres, that's it, that's your, your minimum for having farm animals?
I think you can go out of, I think you can do it that way.
Minimum acre size.
Minimum acre size.
That'd be a way to approach it.
But you're doing, according to your proposed law, you're doing it for other types of animals.
When did, when did they ban one acre?
It's always been one acre zoning. It's always been one acre zoning on North Road.
One acre zoning? I don't remember that one. So, you can build a house on one acre, W. Colley?
Yep. So, you could subdivide.
Right, right.
Your, so, one acre.
Wow. I thought it was three, but that's okay. Good. Five houses, no acres.
Now, just to answer your question, your, your Mr. Mayor, roosters, they definitely don't need to be made noise, because we have had them behind us as well from time to time. Although, we were always told by any of the zoning officers up to this point that while hens were potentially could be considered pets, roosters were definitely not allowed. Obviously, the law hasn't been that clear over the years, but it's always been looked at in the past. Whether the, he was spoken to at times or not, I don't know, but roosters have come and gone. And trust me, at the crack of dawn, you know there's a rooster out there.
Jenny brought up reproduction. Now, that's only, right? I mean, the idea is of no roosters, so you're going to be getting eggs, and you're not going to have more chickens.
Yeah. I got three roosters, they have a little bandy. Two of them.
We're saying you can only have six on a, less than an acre.
I mean, I got one of them.
Six hens.
I don't want all the roosters. I really didn't want any roosters. When you get chickens, you don't know what you're getting, okay? And that's what happens when you buy them.
I'm also in support of banning roosters.
Banning roosters? CRC numbers, did we talk about straight run versus the other kind of run when you buy your chicks?
Say again?
And there are some that are sorted.
Yeah, but they, they, well, they lie. They lie. They charge you more money for, and then all of a sudden, you get a rooster, with two.
Undependables.
Yeah. Well, no, I, I gave all, most of all the roosters away, except for the little ones I got. I got a little bear, and the foxes has taken care of a couple. Fox also took a turkey, a turkey, and a couple ducks, all right? So, it's not just because the foxes are here, they've been here for years, you know, even before everything was going on, and so we do have, and we got, I mean, look up in Claremont, a horse got attacked by a coyote up there, a bobcat, a bobcat, a couple weeks ago.
I don't have any statistics there. This is from driving, excuse me, I don't have any statistics, but from driving back and forth to Poughkeepsie on a regular basis, there, in my mind, there's no doubt that there are more foxes and coyotes and other types of animals running around than there were in the past ten, fifteen, twenty years ago.
From environmental, I mean, there's a lot of development, and they're being pushed out, and they're just...
And they be put down.
It's not because they're attracted to anything.
Yeah, that's not because of the chickens, but I can't imagine why they wouldn't come in for the chickens sharing that door.
Well, they look for food source. Yeah, they're not coming for food source, they, if they ain't looking for food, they won't be. I mean, all development going on, they're looking for, for their food, and that's what they do.
All right, folks, if I could just bring it back. So, did you have a, a chicken related, something related to this legislation?
You have something about chickens, yeah?
Keep it here. But, um, okay, so we have other business to do tonight, obviously. Thank you all for coming and your input. I think where we're at is, we're gonna keep mulling this over, try and digest your comments. We will come up with something, and there will be another public hearing announced on whatever changes we make. If anyone has further comments or anything you said tonight that you want to put in writing and submit to the village board, that would be helpful for us. I mean, we certainly have the clerk's minutes tonight and the tape, but, or if there are other people you know who have feelings on this issue either way, encourage them to write to us, and, and there will be a different draft and another public hearing just like this, and we'll see if Tivoli can figure this out. It is, I think you get a sense of the challenges that we face trying to do the best we can.
Yeah, and I'd just like to acknowledge the effort that has been made by the zoning review committee to digest a whole lot of information about this and, and try to find a solution that those who accommodate, at least most of us, and I thank them because they don't get paid for that.
Thank you, Senator Beatty.
I mean, I think it sounds like more of the problem is in development with the chickens, okay? And if this guy is not doing the chickens right, you know, if they just keep them in a little cage or something, and that's it, then you can't just keep them in a cage. They're not pets, they're just, maybe even for me, I don't know. But something should be addressed for that, for that. I mean, if there's no complaint, but anything else, anybody else in the village, then maybe they should do something over there for the village, over the Tivoli acre, or whatever.
I mean, the, the fact is, there are other chicken owners in the development.
Yeah.
That we don't get complaints about, but there are people, that is not the only property with chickens over there.
Right. But that's when they, if there's a complaint, a big complaint about that, maybe they should talk to the people who have the chickens, say, hey, you know...
Sort of like what you...
If they're not, I mean, if they're throwing them on your property, that's not right either.
At least, at least one of the property owners I know has, has chickens there at the back of their property is the woods. It's not another house. So...
So, they don't get complaints?
I think it's a little bit of a different situation, but...
Well, if they're bothering somebody, then somebody should tell the homeowner, you know, hey, you know, you've got these chickens, da-da-da-da, you know, not, because then everybody's infected. And I'm, I mean, hey, they're my life, I love my kids, she has chickens, you know, I mean, how many other people have chickens that care about them, who care about them, and I do? Mine, there are no, anybody else, but, you know.
But the same point, I think...
And I'm very hostile about this because they are my children, and I don't care what anybody says. You ask anybody around here.
All right, I'm gonna give Mr. Collins.
Well, as a pet owner, I certainly understand the tactics of the pets.
And if, if...
But they're not domesticated to the point, as a dog or cat, where you might be able to exercise some control over their behavior.
I know, I've tried before.
All right, folks, so, is there a motion to close this public hearing?
I move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a second from the board? I think all in favor? All right, all right. All right, thanks, folks.
Thank you.
We'll just take like thirty, forty seconds for those who need to go somewhere, and then we'll get into our monthly meeting. We're ready. Clerk Bruno, you ready?
I am.
Okay, good evening, everyone. It is seven forty-eight PM on the twentieth of September, two thousand seventeen, and I hereby call to order the September meeting of the village of Tivoli Board of Trustees. Would you please join me and pledge allegiance to our flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our heart. Thank you very much. Thanks to those of you who sat through the public hearing and are now here for the monthly meeting. Anyone's welcome to join.
I pledge to the Constitution, and I'm an atheist.
You can leave that over, Pat.
Pat. I can't be a atheist. Except for when you make this to be open.
All right, we're gonna begin with a monthly clerk's report, please.
Yes, folks, that's, is this a chicken? Oh, that, that just started. That started itself.
I'll be on the floor.
Do you want to log?
Go. Back to the clerk's report, please.
Back to the clerk's report. Since the last meeting, six hundred and sixty trash tags were sold, two payrolls were processed. Planning and zoning boards did not meet, it's been relatively quiet, and just for a note for the future, Monday, October ninth, the clerk's office will be closed in observance of Columbus Day.
Thank you, Clerk Bruno. Trustees, we have two sets of meeting minutes in your binders. You've had a chance to review these. We've got the August sixteenth regular board meeting and the September sixth special meeting minutes. And I'll just say, for the special meeting, we were asked by the Northern Duchess Alliance to sponsor a grant they were interested in. We were told about that on pretty short notice, up to the grant deadline. We called a special meeting, we got the trustees in, and we authorized it, and got it done, and then they decided not to apply. So, yes, but they were very grateful. So, that's the September sixth special meeting. Special meeting sounds special, and I just wanted you to know what, what that was about. We're trying to support the Northern Duchess Alliance, be their municipal sponsor in a grant, which they didn't have it applying for.
Do you have to tell about number seven, or do you agenda?
Yes, thank you. And before we get too far, we are, there's one agenda item that we need to add to the handout, which was left off earlier. It's a motion to accept the annual financial document. It's sort of a annual housekeeping thing. We have our bookkeeper consultant go over the entire budget for last year. Now that it's over, produce a document that goes to the Office of the State Comptroller. We've reviewed that, we need to accept it. So, thank you, Trustee Murphy, for reminding me to add that to you. So, that'll be a seventh agenda item.
I move that the minutes of the last two meetings be approved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Minutes are approved. Moving on to the treasurer's report. I'm gonna thank Treasurer Bonnie Day for her work. The totals for this month, out of the general fund, one hundred and eighteen thousand, four hundred forty-six dollars and three cents. Out of the water fund, six thousand, sixty-four dollars and sixty-one cents. And out of the sewer fund, six thousand, seven hundred and eight dollars and seven cents, for a grand total of one hundred and thirty-one thousand, two hundred and eighteen dollars and seventy-one cents. Folks who follow this every month may note that the general fund expenditure was almost double what's sort of typical, were usually around forty, fifty, sixty grand. It was a hundred and eighteen thousand. Sixty-three thousand dollars of the bills this month are the first payment for the Pine Street bus stop, so that's not sort of a typical expense. That work is ninety-nine percent completed. We're beginning to pay the contractor. After we pay the contractor, under the community development block grant, we'll get reimbursed that sixty-three grand next week or the week after. So, don't be alarmed by that total, that's what's going on there. Is there a motion to accept the treasurer's report?
I move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The report is accepted. Is there a motion to pay the bills?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
That was Schneider followed by Ezraidi. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we can pay the bills. So, moving on to the zoning report, Trustee Ezraidi, please.
Yes, we got a report from our code enforcement officer, John Fenton. He noted that three building permits had been reviewed and issued, four inspections of buildings had been performed, six complaints had been submitted and investigated, two violations of zoning rules had been issued, and that he had attended one court hearing. In addition to that, he undertook two municipal searches. Those happen usually when a, a transaction is about to occur, and he had scheduled two fire inspections. So, he's been busy.
Thank you, Trustee Ezraidi. So, now we are at the point in meeting where we accept public comment, but on the agenda items only. So, we've got two public hearings we're gonna set for next month. We have to annually renew our health plan. We have to annually renew our health plan, we're setting up some retirement contribution funds. That's when an employee of the village leaves service to the village and they have unused vacation time, for example, they're entitled to be paid for those unused days. We happen to have an employee who's been here thirty-five years next week, and while we hope this individual stays around for a very long time, we know that that won't go on forever, so we need to get ready for that punch to the budget, so that's, we're gonna set up a fund for that. And probably the most exciting thing on the agenda tonight, we're gonna be moving forward with buying our streetlights from Central Hudson, and we can talk about that now if you like. And then we've got a few budget modifications, and again, accepting that annual financial document. Any comments on the agenda items? Anything you'd like me to explain more fully, I'm happy to. Yes, Matthew?
Yeah, well, I'm curious about those. I'm also curious about the zoning fractions, are there details that we should know about or anything?
Well, let's get to that at the next part, because it's not an agenda item.
Okay, all right, about the lights, the lighting, I mean, what are we looking for?
Yeah, so I will explain this, and if anyone wants to jump in, it's complex enough, I think I finally have a good grasp on it. And I want to especially thank the Village Green Committee, and especially on that committee, thank Danielle Ryu and Jonathan Thrombley, who have really investigated this on behalf of the village, and like a good committee, like a ZRC, made recommendations back to us, so they're doing the homework, and they've done a lot. So what's happening in many communities in our area is that they are buying their lights from Central Hudson. So currently, the cost of our streetlights annually is about twenty-seven thousand dollars. That cost is broken out for several reasons. There's the actual electricity you use, there is a fee associated just with getting electricity to Tivoli, that's delivery. But by far the biggest cost is we pay rent to Central Hudson for all the arms and the fixtures on the end of the arm. That's eighteen thousand dollars a year of our twenty-seven. When you buy, you don't pay rent anymore. It's just like your house. So we're looking to buy and begin those savings. Now, once you've bought them, you own them and you're responsible. So the other thing that's happening alongside of this is there's something that Tivoli got involved in over a year ago called the Mid Hudson Streetlight Consortium, and it's a number of communities got together, applied for a grant, won the grant, and were able to get basically, you know, buy your own lights and convert to LED experts to advise these several communities. So Village of Red Oak, Town of Red Oak, Rosendale, New Paltz, there were what, fourteen or seventeen? So we have a pretty good grasp, so as soon as we buy them, we're gonna save on the rent, and then eventually, with the help of this consortium and their consultants that they're able to hire, they will advise us on, hey, these old mercury vapors are very inefficient, here's the next one you should buy, it's an LED. So you can, we're also gonna get advice on a lighting plan, like a design, so someone will come in and say, maybe this light is too bright, this light could be less, you don't need this many lights here. It even gets to a point where some are at different brightnesses at different hours of the day. So it's all towards sort of saving money and having a better environmental impact.
We were actually asked-
We'll get to that.
We were offered, when Central Hudson started and they should be able to go to LEDs, they just said to us, look, we're just gonna start to convert unless you object. We thought about that, because Tivoli, one of the things that I love about Tivoli is that there isn't a lot of light pollution. The lights are not too bright, so you can actually see them, and I was concerned, the LED lights tend to be a cooler light, a bluer light, and I couldn't, I thought the village should have some control over that. Because we did that, when they started to replace the bulbs with LED bulbs or LED fixtures, they put one right outside of Broadway Pizza, right, that was blue, just really garish color, and we got to go back and say, oh, you know, it's supposed to do that. And they replaced it actually with a light that had a warmer tone and was not as bright. Now we're gonna get to hang those fixtures and lights, and we're gonna get a lighting expert who's gonna help us design that appropriately for where we do new bright lights and-
We have a lot of public comments to decide. Mr. Walsh?
Who's, I assume we're gonna be maintaining the village?
So what would happen through this consortium is a number of municipalities that go in, we're looking maybe six or seven, New Paltz, Rosendale, Red Oak, Red Oak, Red Oak, possibly Rhine, Tivoli, we all go in together with a maintenance contract. So it's anticipated that around November, we have put out a request for proposals, and you get one outfit who's gonna service all these communities, so we have some serious negotiating power and buying power for those services. But yes, we will be responsible, but we're gonna hire someone.
Right.
And what cost these lights gonna be?
The lights are, currently each fixture is three hundred and three dollars.
Okay, is that the whole, with the arm and everything, is that the light?
It's the arm and the light, and we have, I believe, ninety-seven, so it's about thirty grand. And as soon as you buy them, we're gonna not be paying that eighteen every year.
And then you get to get the grant too.
Yeah, so it's some serious savings that will quickly. Matthew, did you-
Yeah, new question also. I noticed a couple of years ago, when they put LED in the stoplights, and if there's a snowstorm and it's really wet, because there's no heat, you can't see where the lights are changing red or not. I don't know, going down that road that goes by the mall or something like that, I don't know.
Or you could smell it.
Well, yeah, because snow is packing up, and because there's no heat, it's melted. But anyway, a question, you know, because Broadway is a county road, does that affect anything as far as the lighting, or is that just what's in the orbit for nine years?
There's still, there's still our streetlights, yeah. We are living here and paying the, DC probably let them just go out, right, they don't, you know. So, yeah, we pay for ninety-seven lights around the village. Any other public comment at this time on any agenda items? And there's another public comment period at the meeting, so we will dive in. First item, to set a public hearing for Wednesday, October eleventh, twenty seventeen, at seven PM, for the two thousand seventeen CDBG application. So that's the Community Development Block Grant, it's the same grant program which funded our new bus stop over there, those improvements. We would like to apply for what we're calling Phase Two, which we're gonna have a public hearing on. It's a requirement for the grant application. That would be at seven PM on October eleventh, and we're gonna have our engineer here to present the plan, but essentially, it's to continue eastward along Pine Street, doing drainage and sidewalk improvements all the way over to North Road. Those grants, I believe the maximum award you can get is two hundred thousand. Typically, they'll give less, you may ask for one sixty, and they give you one twenty, which was the case with our bus stop. So that's what our aspiration is, and we're setting a public hearing for seven PM on October eleventh. If there's a motion to do so.
I move.
And is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
I hope we get it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we've got our public hearing on the eleventh at seven PM on the Pine Street CDBG. Next item.
And I guess one of the reasons that we chose that as a project is the, we hope that it will improve our chances of winning it, because it's a continuation of a walkable setting, and our engineer has advised us that gives us a better chance of actually bringing it up.
It kind of leverages the improvements that Dutchess County has already enabled for the terminus of their loop bus. If you get off that loop bus and you walk through a puddle onto a poor sidewalk, you know, so we're kinda, this is just continuing-
Extension.
Yep. All right, agenda item number two, set a public hearing for Wednesday, October eleventh, twenty seventeen, at seven fifteen, regarding the adoption of local law B of two thousand seventeen, a local law to amend, chapter one fifty-one of the village code entitled Noise. And what we're doing here is we're changing one sentence in the noise law. The old law used to read, you know, one conviction, hundred fifty dollars, second conviction in a calendar year, the next fine, three hundred, and the third conviction in a calendar year, five hundred. We are changing that to, yeah, let me get the exact wording there. Check it in here somewhere, that's the setting. All right, anyway, we're changing it to, here it is. Sorry for shuffling around, here it is, we're changing it to, upon a first conviction, by a fine not less than, this is all the same, the only change is for a period not to, no, I need a second admission, excuse me, here it is, upon a second violation, both of which were committed within a period of twelve months. We're changing the words from calendar year, period of twelve months. That's the only change in the law. So we're gonna have a public hearing on that, right after the Community Development Block Grant Application Public Hearing. And this draft, which will show that small change of language, will be on the website, you can take a look at it, you can pick up a copy at the clerk's office. Is there a motion to set the public hearing for the adoption of local law number B two thousand seventeen for October eleventh, seven fifteen?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
That was Murphy followed by Azraidi. Any discussion?
I'm marching on evil.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that public hearing is set. Moving on to agenda item number three, we do offer health insurance to some of our employees, and we need to renew that policy every year. Board of Trustees, we've reviewed this plenty, we're gonna continue with the same plan. Unfortunately, the plan is going up like health insurance everywhere, it's going up ten percent, we'll be paying an additional three thousand and some dollars a year for this, but it's still the best value that we were able to find at this time. But, you know, these big national conversations about health insurance, they have a colossal impact on what we can do here, and it's true for all municipalities. I never hear them talking about municipalities, it's a lot about the individual states maybe, but every little town and village and city is feeling this squeeze, and we are too. So with that said, is there a motion to approve MVP Health Plan Renewal?
Yes, I move.
That was the deputy major, is there a second?
Second.
That was trustee Murphy, called you deputy major.
I like that.
Yes, or not to?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Number four, resolution authorizing establishment of retire contribution, retirement contribution reserve funds. So I mentioned this a few moments ago, our employees who leave service and they've got unspent vacation and sick days, there's a whole formula by which they can buy those out if they are unspent, and for someone who's been here a very long time and is in great health, this individual's got a lot of sick times. So we saw this a few years ago when some employees left, you know, we're talking, in seven years, you can have several thousand dollar hit to the budget that, you know, maybe you didn't know that person was about to retire that year. So in the interest of planning and being ready for the inevitable, we're gonna set up these reserve funds. Is there a motion authorizing the establishment of a retirement contribution reserve fund?
So moved.
All right, that was Azraidi followed by Schneider, and we'll do a roll call vote in honor of our attorney who's not here. Trustee Schneider?
Aye.
Trustee Azraidi?
Aye.
Trustee Murphy?
Aye.
Trustee, excuse me, deputy mayor, major?
Aye.
And I also vote aye, resolution is adopted. Moving on to number five, a resolution approving increase and improvement of lighting facilities in the village of Tivoli. What this does is it legally says that we can move forward and buy our lights. We could decide not to do it tomorrow, I don't think it's likely, but it's just the first step. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution approving the increase and improvement of lighting facilities in the village of Tivoli?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
On this one, any further discussion? No, I think it's a good first step, okay? It would be great to save that much money. Trustee Schneider?
Aye.
Trustee Azraidi?
Aye.
Trustee Murphy?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor, major?
Aye.
And I also vote aye, resolution is adopted. Item six, budget modifications. Trustees, we went over these in the workshop. Hopefully you've seen, a couple of days ago, we had the crosswalks over around Pine Street, entrance to the park were repainted. Like all these projects, the poor contractor was a few gallons short, and you'll see there's a spot that wasn't painted, he's coming back Wednesday, he was quite embarrassed, it's quite right. So anyway, we spent about nine hundred dollars getting that done, we also threw in a few stop bars at the, at Washburn Avenue, Spring Street, and Farrow Avenue, those are those white bars where you're supposed to stop before you creep in. So the traffic control line went over a little bit, we had some zoning work done, you know, we went through that legislation, chicken legislation, you know, every time we do this, it does cost us money, it has to get legal review and review from the planning and whatnot. And the biggest budget modification here is, again, to cover that sixty-three thousand dollar payment, we have to put that much money towards the engineering line. We know we're gonna get that back very shortly, so that's the last budget modification. With that said, is there a motion to adopt the budget modifications?
I move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And you've approved the budget mods. And lastly, the AUD, which I talked about, which we talked about earlier, this is the Annual Financial Report Update Document. I do believe this gets put on the website?
Yes.
And does get sent to the State Comptroller. The good news is, Tivoli is in very strong financial standing, all of our reserve funds increased, that's part of what's, and while we also did not raise taxes last year, no need to when you're actually getting to put some money in the bank, we certainly hope that can continue to be the case, and it's what's allowing us to take on a few projects now, because we've got, we've got some money to do some things, for example, the Broadway sidewalks, which I'll talk about in a few minutes. So is there a motion to accept the AUD?
So moved.
That was trustee Murphy followed by trustee Azraidi. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and the AUD is accepted. Moving on to committee reports, excuse me, before we do that, I'll just announce that the next board meeting will be Wednesday, October eighteenth, at seven PM, followed by a workshop at six PM, here at the historic Wastepiester Hall, and the week before that, we'll have our regular workshop, October eleventh, which is gonna start with the CDBG public hearing, go into the change in wording to the noise law public hearing, and then we'll just be a general workshop for whatever else is before the board at that time, that's October eleventh. Now we can move on to trustee reports, trustee Azraidi.
Well, I'm going to go a little bit off unusual talk here. I just wanted to note that the village of Tivoli has endured some rather large chemical improvements over the summer, including a bridge that took longer than we had hoped, but is in the final stages here. Also, the bus stop, which was blocking us at about the same time that we were trying to get around the bridge, that bus stop is in place, and if you haven't been over there, it is, it's really beautiful, it's, and we've made the county bus happier and the ride bus happier, and it's well-lighted and it's pretty, and we've put in three new, what kind of trees?
Magnolias.
Magnolias, to replace the trees that came down. So if you haven't been there, stop by, because Tivoli's looking good. And having been around for the previous zoning review committee, which set up the historic district, I have been very pleased over the last year to see the streetscape improved by private individuals making improvements on their houses, and doing so in a way that is really very complementary to the existing village streetscape. So you see that going down on Montgomery, up on North Road, and probably in other places in the village where that I don't frequent as often, but I think that is the result of sitting on Nita Macosse's porch for about three years, once a month on Mondays, that's when we got this thing started, and then having it codified by our land use attorney and the help of our village planner, and, you know, if you haven't looked, it's something to be pleased with. And it's the impact of zoning when you get it right, so it's the reason we have these hearings and go through all of this effort, because it is good to get everybody's input into the process. The other thing I wanted to comment on is that every year, the Rotary has a Citizen of the Year that they celebrate, and this year, it is going to be Brenda Cagle. and this year it is going to be Brenda Kegel. And a lot of the things that we know, that we see is a result of the really wonderful work that she's done energizing the town with solar panels, improving all kinds of things that have to do with energy usage. She's also been on the community conservation with CAC and she was really somebody who spearheaded something called the Connectivity Study in Red Hook. And I resisted the opportunity to speak about this, but Red Hook is blessed partly because we have so many farms, but with biodiversity, reed, coyotes and foxes and bobcats and all kinds of critters because the, their, the way they travel through the town has remained uninterrupted. You may be unhappy about that and I said, well, why, what's the point besides getting to see all these critters of that? But the fact is, that biodiversity leads to a reduction of the number of white-footed mice. White-footed mice are carriers of Lyme ticks and it also improves the groundwater that we have to pick into. So some of these things that you're seeing are actually the positive results of some real efforts, again, by people in committees. And Brenda Kegel is the star of this. So if you have a chance, that dinner is on the 24th of October. Anybody can come. You just have to buy a ticket. I think the ticket is $45. I highly would like to see a big Tivoli present.
She was also on the Red Hook Trails Committee.
Red Hook Trails, yes.
Mentored our Green Committee and our Tree Committee because her tree work was, or was it?
And she's a relative newcomer. She's only been here 30, 35 years. So, sorry, for you to do that. And I have the well report, so.
What's your estimate for the rainfall?
The thing about this, 5.5. Anybody else?
I'll go four, 6.4, four.
All right, I guess I'll take the low, I'll say 3.5.
Okay, trans the winner. August was actually a fairly dry month, 2.8 inches. Okay, the Ballot Well did not run. The McKnight Well ran at about its capacity of 10,000 gallons a day. The number two Pots West Well was running at 12,000 gallons a day and the five PW was at, was off for five days of the month, but otherwise ran at about 9,500. The four PE and ten PE, for some reason, they, jointly, they were running at about 17,000 gallons a day. The interesting thing about these wells is that they haven't always been as productive. But this, in this period, probably resulting from all of the water that we got in May, June and July, they've been running at high capacity. And consequently, the Woodmark Wells, which have been running at about 23, 24, were not as important to the total amount of water that was received. As a result of all that, the tower was full at about 168, 169 foot capacity, which gives you the water pressure as well as protection against fire. We did have two incidents of water main breaks, I believe.
Two in the very back of the.
Yeah, yes, one at 21 North Road and one at three Spring Street. No, that's where they took the water. Yes, it was a water main break on Broadway up on Human Hill on the 16th of August. But we had, the water quality was good and that's the report.
Thank you, Trustee Azrati. Trustee Schneider, please.
Okay, the Tivoli Village Court Charge Volume Summary Report for August 1st through August 31st. Charges received total of 19, charges disposed total of 2. And the total money collected and remitted to the State Comptroller was $2,191.
Thank you, Trustee Schneider. I'm just looking at the, some of the charges, charges that were addressed. So we've got an open container from May we've got fined and we have, we have four unreasonable noise convictions. Those are all dating from, let's see, we've got two from February, one from April and one from May. So it takes a little time to work their way through the court. But, you know, we're very serious about that and I will just, at this time, throw in that in the last two weekends, we've had several open container tickets and four noise tickets and four nuisance gathering tickets, which have been written as we get to go to court. But on that note, you know, this is serious. A lot of the hardest work was a few years ago, but for all of us in this community, you know, we've got the tools, we've got the laws, we've got the police doing their jobs. What we need to do is call in those complaints if, if they exist. This is not about picking on anyone, but if you're disturbed and you tell me on Monday morning, that's not gonna help this whole project. You need to call those deputies while the noise is happening. And that number is 486-3800. And it's, I mean, I actually personally want to ask you to please do that because when I hear there was noise during the week from the previous weekend, I can't do anything. And, and what you need to do for all of us who've put these laws on the books, who've done this sort of outreach and talked about the quality of life in the village, make those calls, please, and don't feel like you need to be disturbed. So 486-3800, Dutch County Sheriff's Office.
I think it's also a good time to remind anybody who is new to the village that there are parking restrictions and you can obtain a parking permit from the village clerk for less than the fine you'll get if you're parking inappropriately or against our ordinance there. So, anybody new, as I said, I encourage you to stop by the village office and procure your parking permit to avoid those.
And that starts November 15th. No one tonight parking. Trustee Murphy, please.
I don't have anything much to say.
Okay.
Try not to speak too much. But we are planning on bringing back the Halloween lip sync. It'll be on the third floor of this building. We appreciate the American Legion. It just seemed very large and cavernous compared to the group that showed up. So we're gonna bring it up on the third floor on October 29th from three, no, I'm sorry, from four to six o'clock. So there'll be more information coming from there.
Yeah, costume lip sync, correct? Costume lip sync, yeah.
Rocky Horror Picture Show.
Maybe at a later time. Sounds like fun though. Thank you, Trustee Murphy. Deputy Mayor, Major?
Okay, at the library. So, the library got two mini grants from the Midhudson Library System and these are funding programs for seniors. So, one of them is on Saturday, the next six Saturday mornings from 10 to 2, there's tech assistance for seniors. You can come and get developed for a major high school student and you can bring your own devices, phones, tablets, laptops, whatever, or you can use the ones that are there. And the other thing is chair yoga, which is gonna be on Mondays with Barbara Eichen. And, you know, the usual suspects. We have preschool story hour with Ms. Penny Tuesdays from 10:30 to 11:30 and Hopes and Wills are on some thread. Thursdays from 10 to 2 in the East Room and that is a potluck sort of session for fiber enthusiasts. It's a rollicking good time. James Hearn is gonna be rocking the gazebo on Friday, September 29th at 6:00 PM. And this is James Hearn who made his Tivoli debut at the talent show and was out of sight and he also played at Tivoli Day. And I believe he rocked the gazebo once before, so, six o'clock.
Very, very talented performer.
Friday, the 29th.
Songwriter, really good.
Yep, totally cool. Historic Resources, Sunday, September 24th, 10:00 AM, there's a guided nature walk at Claremont. It's free, but you should reserve a spot and, you know, Claremont's a great place to walk around. And then in October, the Legends by Candlelight Ghost Tours will be going on. So if you go to the Friends of Claremont website, you can see all that stuff. It's gonna be a busy weekend at Montgomery Place. On Saturday, there's a music and nature program. At 1:00, there's a pre-concert wildlife and ecology walk led by Assistant Professor Bruce Robertson. You meet at the visitor center at 2:00 PM. And then after that, there's chamber music, performance outdoors at the mansion and it's, it's gonna be a performance by Bard Conservatory students and all this is free and there's a reception afterwards. And then on Sunday, the 24th, at 10:00 AM and 12:30 PM, there's a historic landscape tour. It's a two-hour hike around the grounds of Montgomery Place. It's like a mile and a half. And the historical highlights will include the waterfalls and the, the remains of the hydro power station. So, that too is free. And it says it's not suitable for children under seven, so keep that in mind. Olana's gonna be doing horse and carriage tours in the autumn, Fridays and Saturdays, and there's a charge for it, but it's in honor of Olana's 50th anniversary. And it sounds pretty cool and the carriage paths up there are amazing and the views are great. Natural Resources, fall hunting season begins in earnest on October 1st. So when you're out in the bays, wear your orange. First thing that is, is available for shooting, I believe, is pheasant. So watch your ankles and as always, watch your ankles for ticks. And the canoe launch is possibly almost done. And if it's not totally done, it's really close and it's looking good. And finally, National Voter Registration Day is next Tuesday, September 26th. There will be something going on at the library, so if you are not registered to vote, if you know anybody who's not registered to vote, please come to the library. Done.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Susan, is there anything fun happening? In Tivoli this Saturday? Tell me.
I'm like moving on. Sorry, sorry.
That's your plug is in.
No one was missing anyway.
But the mayor did.
In case you missed it, street painting is this Saturday. We have a great tale of confidence in the weather because it's sunny for two days on either side of Saturday. So even if things wobble a little bit, we should have sun. Joe Tobin and the Acoustic Men's Show have a great lineup, including, we love this, David Budd and his band. David Budd is one of our artists from the festival and he's now got a band, so he's going to be performing. Another Tivoli resident, Jesse Murphy, who as I understand, a great bassist, has played with Natalie Merchant's band, will be there. So we're going to have some good music. As always, it's acoustic and sets a rather mellow mood for the festival. If you're looking for something to do at around 7:30, quarter of eight, you would be welcome to come. You should probably.
That's AM.
AM. You should probably wear old clothes that you're ready to throw out, but we can give you a paint roller and paint and you can help us to lay those squares out. The street will be cleaned on Friday. The water has been acquired. The apples we're giving them Thursday. The digital registration, our first, has been going very, very well. And I would like to hold up our library president, Felicia Keising, for giving us started on that. And it's going to simplify the process hopefully on Saturday morning.
What about parking on Broadway at some point? When is there no parking?
There are parking, there are no parking. You'll see the signs. They go up. There is no parking on Broadway on, from 5:00 in the morning, I think, until 5:00 in the evening. We do, we haven't engaged H and M towing, so if you have forgotten and left your car there, you will need to call them. They'll know where it is because the cars will be moved at 7:00 in the morning. So.
Thank you, Susan. It's gonna be great. And the other thing that was really great was last Saturday, Horse Scrabble Day. I wanna congratulate our friends in the town and village of Red Hook. Tivoli Marching Parade, we were represented. It was, it was hot, but it was a lot of fun. And an incredible band and just a great day of community celebration. So congratulations to our, to our colleagues in Red Hook for pulling off such a great festival. I just want to mention the Broadway sidewalk work that the village is doing has started. It's gonna happen really fast. They've already demolished the old sidewalk. This is a 240-foot run from approximately number 37-ish, 43.
47 to 47.
43 to 47. This was, in 2013, on one of those CDBG grants, we were able to do 900 feet around the sidewalk, around the village. This was something that we just didn't have enough money to get to back then, but we're doing it now. And some folks are saying, I didn't know the county was going up that far. This is actually a village project. The county's down there. They've got their hands full. But we're doing this and what we're gonna end up with in the end is a clear walkable sidewalk from the bridge up to laundromat on that side. And, you know, we understand, as we mentioned earlier, walkability is one of our great assets here in Tivoli. And it's amazing how expensive sidewalk is with prevailing wage and everything. So we can only do so much every year, but we do hope to, you know, keep this up throughout the village and fix, you know, particularly outgoing eastward past the bridge, I think would be an obvious place to go next. And so that's happening right now. There's no parking on that side and I think by Monday evening, it's supposed to be all finished. Another big project coming up will be the north end of Friendship Street. It's gonna get repaved sometime in the next two weeks or so. Don't have an exact date yet. And lastly, I just want to say thank you to all the ballers in town who were so patient with the many snags that I ran into trying to get them backwards up. I apologize. That project couldn't have run into more, I won't say hurdles, but, you know, hoops and hurdles. But it got done. Stumbling blocks. They're up, they're nice. Everyone's playing ball. I had the privilege of throwing the first air ball. I'm just gonna confess that, followed up by the first modest layup. It's for my own dignity, but they're nice. Let's take care of them. They weren't cheap, but, you know, we want to invest in our, in our park and in our, in our young folks. And the stripes are gonna be redone most likely on this Wednesday. So there was a lot that went into that, but we got there. So, some of those, some of those young guys waited a long time for that to happen. I apologize to them. But it's there. And with that, if, was there any comment from the board on anything before we open to public comment? Folks, we're happy to listen to you. Yes?
Well, two things. I just, question about the sidewalks. I mean, they're, because you were talking about putting new pipes and water pipes and such. Are they running to the sidewalk though?
Not in that stretch, actually.
They don't, there's a manhole cover right where the sidewalk, okay.
Yeah, that's a storm drain.
Okay. Talking about the noise, I, I did call the police. The previous Friday and this last Friday and Saturday night at 11:00 on the dot, there must have been 100 kids each night coming down, trotting through our front lawn and on that wooden bridge with boom boxes and making noise and thumping on there. I did call the police. I don't know if you were aware of that and I don't know what you, the village, can do about it.
I wasn't aware of it at the moment it was happening. I'm aware that you did call, which, you know, thank you. That's what we all need to do.
Yeah, I, but I don't know what happened. I don't know where the, I suspect they were going up the house near IG. I, you know, that's an assumption. going up to the house near N I G. I, you know, it's an assumption that I could.
Right. When I, when I know that we had, when I know that we had that series of noise and nuisance tickets written, I, at this time, don't have the address of those, but I think well have been.
Yeah. It was amazing. I've never seen so many kids. And they were, they were pretty rude. I asked them to quiet down and they're just swearing at me and, you know, I was, you know, working, they were walking up, they were walking up five times, you know, just each, anyway.
I mean, I, this is exactly what we are trying to get out of this village. It's just not the place for that. We can't absorb it. We don't want to absorb it. We shouldn't have to absorb it. And, uh, unfortunately, a lot of these people making this noise are not members of our community. They come here and, uh, we all know about that, but what I'm saying is, my belief is the more we can enforce the consequences of, of breaking our laws, at some point, the word's going to get around and people are going to stop doing it or, or slow down.
It's the toll.
Yeah.
Oh, I hate the phrase, but the garbage cans. Wait, is John looking at the, because you know, you see on four, you probably noticed that, you know, the same people looking, you know.
I've, I've hated the garbage cans for years and what's happening with that is we, um, we are rewriting the code itself.
Yeah.
Currently this, this fall. Um, because, um, the, the code on the books is very old and it predates all the private haulers that have.
Right.
Come into town. But we're going to have a code that lets him enforce those. And that's, um, that's, that's the short version of how complicated it's been, but.
It's a nice new sidewalk. You want to be able to walk on it.
I couldn't agree more. I couldn't agree more. Yeah. We will get to those.
Okay.
Um, the village looks great. The bus stop's awesome. Bravo on the basketball hoops. But, um, we're suffering in the neighborhood a little bit because, um, the board is well aware. The streets are, uh, entirely in need of repaving, um, essentially non-existent drainage. I mean, you know, that predates anybody here, I'm sure, uh, when the neighborhood was put in. Um, and some landscaping features that need to be, um, you know, taken care like the ones in the village are being taken care, you know, the rest of the village. Um, so hopefully we can look at that in the near future.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, you know, wherever, you and I have talked about this and, uh, you know, in particular, as I mentioned to the board some time ago, those streets are all getting to that point where, um, you know, they're, they're old now. And, uh, and on the, uh, you know, beautification things, the, the landscape areas, that's something we talked about with Green Committee and the Tree Committee, but we're going to, we're going to get over that.
Another thing, uh, going in that little loop by Mona's House, um, there's usually like big trucks with lawnmowers attached to it. You know, like somebody's obviously has a landscaping business and they're, they're always parked like in that loop.
Not in the driveway.
Not in the driveway. Yeah.
And you think, you think it's someone who resides over there?
Yeah, yeah. I, I, there's a kid, I think he's got like a landscaping business and that's one thing I feel like if it's parked in the driveway, but now they're using the actual street to park trucks with equipment on them.
There is a, a section of the code that addresses that. So that is, um, the first one off.
Not to mention chickens, but, you know.
We'll, we'll follow up on that.
But I, I personally talked to some kids. They love the hoops. They're excited. Um, so, you know, it's coming together. And what's going on? What's up with the bridge? What's the latest?
I can't tell you how many folks responded to the quarterly newsletter with, "Any mention of the bridge was conspicuously absent, Mr. Mayor." Um, we're fine with it, which is when, when I get to educate people about the many layers of government under which they live, uh, as a county project.
Right.
As I understand it, um, uh, they're, they're expecting end of October, late October. It's the latest official word.
Was that pre-caste culvert? Was that planned or was that something they had to do because they ran into problems?
They found an older bridge.
Oh, I know. I saw it. I've been down there a few times checking on.
I don't know if, if that was in response to what they found or if that was always just something. I don't know. But, you know, with all these questions, let's call, um, Commissioner Volkind at the county and.
Or Matt Plutkovich.
It's more out of curiosity. I, I.
Matt Plutkovich, um, your county executive, uh, legislator Struinsky, you know, it's a great time to realize that, you know, see, the, I think the county level of government is most invisible to folks. And we happen to have a county road, so we sort of know about it. But, you know, you don't pay your county tax bill because it's going in on your sales tax everywhere, you know? So, um, but let's not forget that we pay taxes to the county and they do things for us like replace bridges and, uh, we've got representation there. So when you've got questions or complaints, you can go there with them.
Because we have lots of answers for local things. We don't have.
But they don't give you guys updates on the bridge?
Yeah, they gave us an update and it was, uh.
Just the timeframe?
Yeah.
Yeah. And our stone, remember we had that meeting and now that, that's the stone and the facade is going to be.
Yeah, we're expecting the, uh, stone-clad parapets in the historic lampposts, which, I mean, Dutch County was very, um, open to working with us and, I mean, they literally let us pick the lampposts out of the catalog.
That's Lou. Easy execute.
Matthew knows all these guys personally now, so.
Yeah, we're first nation. We live right next to it.
Yeah, yeah. No, I know. You guys have lunch here?
I offered to buy a pizza, but I still want three slices.
Well, so hopefully not long now. And, uh, you know, it's been, we've all gotten through it together. We're almost through. I know particularly for residents of Montgomery and, and somewhat on North Road, you know, it's really had an impact on their quality of life, but we did need the bridge.
Otherwise Saturday looks beautiful. I can't wait.
Great. Thanks.
Are you coming early?
Yeah, I'll be there. I'll be ready.
I mean, um, you talk about traffic on North Borough. I mean, they're like crazy.
Now you know where we go.
Speed, no, I'm talking speed. Yes, speedy there.
Yeah. Now you know.
There's this one little red car. I, I don't know who he is or where he is. Crazy, crazy. You know, caught the other one.
What about a guy on an orange bicycle? Does he speed bike?
No, I'd give him a soda.
He's fast for you.
No, no, I am.
No, really. Um, I mean, I know the speed limit's thirty miles an hour. Okay. Um, but it's, sometimes it's sixty, seventy. They go by the house like crazy.
That's when the softball games get done.
No, not all the time.
Well, as always, you know, speeding continues to be a perennial challenge and, you know, we'll continue to call out the attention of our patrol.
I've been mentioning to the couple of, you know, the troopers and sheriffs, sitting in my driveway, sitting next driveway. I've basically always two hours on there. Someone in the driveway watching them by.
I seen the sheriff back in the year driveway one day.
Yeah.
That was a wild, that was a wild.
Some is crazy. Those old kids.
They speed by, but they never.
You know?
All right, folks, um, we've been here for a, a long evening and, uh, we're an hour and forty-five minutes without the A C now. So, uh, is there any other? Yes. Final word goes to.
The German?
Okay. Long favor.
Hi.
We're, thank you, everyone.
You with the development?